Five thirty, committee of the whole.
I came out of my house slightly down the hill.
So before we start, we're still meeting, I hope.
Morgan?
No.
Okay, well, with that being, before I call this meeting to order, I just want to recognize that this land is the unseeded territory of Shnaha and Yakav, those people in particular, and I certainly respect their history and their care of the land in the past and going forward. I work and am praying respectfully on this land today and tomorrow, and let's let our decisions tonight consider the past, present, and future of this place and all its people, past, present, and future. And with that, I would like to call the Committee of the Whole for November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five to order. In one month, it will be Christmas Eve by his way. So in front of you, council, there is an agenda, and I'm looking for a mover and a secondary about the agenda for the November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five Committee of the Whole meeting. The move, movers, secondaries, any discussion on the agenda? Seeing nine, all in favor? Harry, we move to item. And I apologize to C A O McConnell right now. Were there any changes in the agenda? Item three A, business items, proposed recommendation.
I'm looking for a resolution this time.
I'm looking for a recommendation.
Is that written down in the hall?
Yes.
Really, and as Director of Corporate Services, Forster is training us on these kinds of things. This is the kind of conversation that's coming to council for dialogue and discussion prior to taking it to a regular meeting of council for a resolution. This policy that I've brought forward here is a very council policy, which is why it's been brought to your consideration. But we're not asking council to endorse this policy tonight. We're asking council to consider this policy, and if they're prepared to do so, we've been giving this to them December eighteen for endorsement.
So if I could, if I could request, this is, this is. Which has been a related request. Some phrasing such as in front, council in front of you, there is a policy for this discussion on the floor. Yes, that's, that's it. Does anybody wish to open the conversation?
Yeah, so the committee.
Is that okay language?
You know, as for the committee here, pretty soon discussed the reporting, the policy, and you can be able to make your, the committee recommendation to council on. Basically provide the recommendation to council, which would be adopted at a later date. So the Committee of the Whole is more for discussion and formulating the recommendations and providing feedback to staff, whereas council is to make the decisions.
Okay, so council, in front of you is a topic for discussion and possibly leading to a recommendation to council for decision later on. Does anybody wish to open the conversation? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Uh, I would like to say this time, and I'm in favor of this. Thing that we had traditionally before the policy change granted those hours. And always during tax season, they added extra hours to get extra people through the door because if there's one time of the year, we love to see everybody's smiling face with that tax season. Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. Um, I can't see how it would impact the operation in any way, because if I read it correctly. The time that would have been E D O time or whatever, however that impacted or didn't impact. There'll still be individuals who are working till four thirty anyway. Oh, you're still gonna, productivity isn't gonna drop, it's not going to change anything really other than, you know, what was in the sheets? Was it one person per month or the other ten things?
That's, that's kind of the, actually, these are the tracking sheets that we've been maintaining, and I just double-checked them. November is kind of an outlier, because we've actually got. Well, oh, we've got two. And if, and if I may, if you look at like October, the latest, most people are showing up. The majority of times, because they, the last time somebody shows up. Some of the times are in the morning, like the last person to attend the office is in the morning, but the latest is three forty-five, one is three sixteen. Beyond that, it's and oftentimes, the one person who shows up to actually get some work in, sort of stimulus, they actually need to go next door.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Councilman Don. I actually think it's a good idea. There's some safety consideration that improves safety and security. Like the, the comments in it about someone sitting there counting cash and the doors are open. And I suspect it's probably this minor level, might say, of, we're not hiring casuals for one or two levels on a regular basis. Who knows what I'm missing? Counsel, anything further? Um, so are we looking for a recommendation that this be brought forth to council for decision?
Uh, yes, should the committee wish they could just vote on the recommendation to provide the recommendation to council for endorsement?
I love bureaucracy. I'm looking for a secondary that we move this to recommend this to council for policy changes. All those in favor? All right, that's moved.
Thank you.
I am B, which I'm looking for interesting conversations on, and this is to discuss the idea that the Committee of the Whole meetings become a standing committee of the whole meeting scheduled five thirty before the first council meeting of each month. So who wants to open this conversation? Councilor McDonald, then we'll go to the other side.
I'm gonna recommend option one, so that we can put it on the floor.
So we're not gonna vote on it, though, we just, we just, we're moving it to go to.
Just the recommendation.
Recommendation, but I'm, I'm looking to do recommended option.
Okay. All right. Counselor Gostick?
I would make a different move, but different discussion anyways.
There is discussion, sir.
Yeah, we're in discussion anyway, so. People here, they were chipped, we have one attending or not attending, assuming it could be a time crunch. Our fellow counselor to the left of me drives in from his work site, and I don't know if it's a. I have no problem doing this, Andy, but I think the earlier is not feasible for, for myself and potentially other counselors, if anyone wants to speak to us, but I will not be a hundred percent attendance. Not that I ever am, but I'm making it even harder for me.
Okay, so one, then two. Go ahead.
Just a question of clarification. What was the reason for wanting to move from, from what we've been doing as an ad hoc basis to going to a scheduled?
Well, having a committee of the whole opens it up for more discussion and allows for direction or like, you know, uh, feedback to staff and prevents uh, council from making ad hoc decisions. Uh, when things go to a council meeting, it's like a yeager and a me, basically at that.
Sorry.
So having the standing committee of the whole meeting will allow for a lot of those topics that are being added to council agendas to move to a regular standing committee of the whole meeting, because currently we only schedule as needed. Um, I don't think it's being implemented as often as it should be.
Okay, so that's.
So that's basically why, so.
I'm two.
I know in my world that it'd be okay if I had a standing meeting so that I can have enough time in advance to actually say, I need someone else to get a kid somewhere, because I don't have, as opposed to getting told on Wednesday that we have one on Monday, whatever, to just have a.
Um, I've got two and three, two. Go ahead, Council, yes.
Yes, um, as Counselor Gostick said, time, time is, is, is always a factor. Half past five is not bad, or plus five is actually a reasonable time. Five o'clock is too early, but half past five um, is manageable for most people, I think, that, that have a normal working day. Um, my question maybe to to Director Foster is, are we gonna, are we gonna have more topics come up? Are we gonna have more discussion? Or is this just to spread out? And, and have it more scheduled?
Basically, um, as I mentioned, uh, items that are being included on the council agenda, um, that would be better off for more discussion with by council, things like the off-leash dog part would have been better suited for a committee of the whole discussion um, instead of putting it in front of council for a decision, which, um, you know, created a little bit more feedback. Uh, so items like that, it would be work that is already being collaborated on and working on without committing to an actual decision at that time. Um, and also for, you know, hot topics, uh, it would allow a little bit more time for the community to become aware. So when you're in a committee of the whole, you know, the agenda's been made public for a little while. Um, and then following this, they'll be able to follow up on it before a decision is made. So if there is a recommendation that the committee is recommending to council that the public might not necessarily want, then there is time for a little bit of feedback there, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
If it's scheduled, are we gonna get the agendas earlier, or is the agenda still gonna be the just before the Committee of the Whole?
Uh, it'll be the same process, um, that just happened for this particular meeting where, uh, so the council procedure bylaw, um, says that they will be published on Thursdays, and I've been broadcasting notices to the public that agendas are available for meetings on a Thursday prior to a meeting. So if we have a regular standing committee of the whole meeting, um, that will be included on our calendar, which will be coming uh, to council for adoption at the next meeting, uh, will be published on the website. Uh, all the notifications will be broadcasted. Um, another thing is that it's much easier to cancel a meeting, so if there isn't enough content to last a half hour between the five thirty and the six o'clock, then I would, um, add the item to a council meeting instead, and then just cancel the committee of the whole. But, um, as it stands, you know, as you mentioned, that it's only a four-day warning when we need to schedule a committee of the whole. Um, so if we have a standing one throughout the year, we can just say, hey, there's not enough, you know, subject matter to last the whole half hour. I don't wanna have a gap between the five thirty and six o'clock meetings. I'd rather just go back to that. Yeah, um, and yeah, that way everything kind of carries forward and hopefully.
Reason I asked the question is that, you know, I sort of felt that, um, people, the whole communication discussion we had the other day, um, that is triggered by the, the off-leash park, was that a lot of people sort of said that they've, they only got to know about it very late on, basically just before the day of the, the meeting, which, and so I was thinking with Committee of the Whole, um, you know, since it's scheduled, it might be nice to be able to give earlier a warning and maybe give people more time.
So I'm very excited about a few more changes that I've been implementing. I'm just waiting for budget approval before I can launch another, I've got a transparency dashboard in the works um, through our website that, um, will allow, I'll, I'll tell you about later. Uh, but it's very fun and very exciting, and I don't know if you've noticed, but also in the last uh, few weeks, that when we do publish the agendas on the website, we have been broadcasting notices, highlighting the subject matter and telling people where they can find the agendas, how and which of the access information is on the agendas. So we have been broadcasting a lot more, uh, details, um, and where you can find factual information directly from our website and accessibility and all that fun stuff, so, uh, I mean.
Yeah, so I was, now we're on the list that and forgot about you, Jeff, but I'm gonna try. Sometimes it takes me a few minutes to, um, accept or consider doing things differently today. Uh, so thinking about this, my, my, my first gut reaction was, oh, an extra half hour early and how do my councilors get here on time? Um, and it certainly has evolved to being as an as-needed basis scheduled first Monday, the first Monday reading of the month, and, and cancels, which is, which is like, okay. So the way I understand it is, is that these conversations, when we're looking at something that will be recommended to go to a council meeting for a decision, doesn't have to be that meeting that same day, it can be in two weeks or a month. So it does, to your point, um, counselor, then more time for public to get themselves aware. I think, and that was something that I had to get my head around. No, no, that's just because we talk about it at this meeting, doesn't mean it's showing up at six fifteen o'clock.
I would really prefer that did not happen. If there's a recommendation, uh, coming from the committee of the whole, unless it's like, you know, extreme circumstances, that it needed to be an immediate decision, uh, but if that were the case, it would be on that council meeting agenda anyways. It wouldn't be, I would prefer that it may even be the, like, the, not the next meeting, but the meeting following the second meeting of the month.
Actually, I have a compliment coming eventually here, too. I, I see an advantage of the, there are counselors who I think will appreciate this, uh, this council and future councils, is that a committee of the whole, if there's not a motion on the floor, you can brainstorm. The rabbit hole you go down, you're not necessarily held to it, you have time for sober second thoughts afterwards. And which goes to my compliment, counsel, in that we have been for a very long time, it's very traditional, that we don't do ad hoc motions very often at the council table. And that's kept us from the rabbit hole for years and years and years. And this preserves that safety valve, but it does allow brainstorming, and I think that's a positive thing. And because a decision doesn't have to be made immediately, it often means that if there's a group of interested people, developers from out of town, people selling encyclopedias to the district, we are less likely to fall victim to populism and making a decision based on ten people versus thirty three thou- three thousand or twenty-eight hundred people. All of those, um, I certainly, I think going forward, I'm, I'm going to try something different. It it may make our council meetings more efficient. And it had that.
Okay, go ahead. I, I just wanted to ask if, or say, in January or February, if we had something that came across in January, but we know we're gonna have a committee of the whole on the first meeting in February, can you post it earlier, because now you know you have committee of the whole and gives them more time? They, they don't understand, does it? Like it, so say, say we have a meeting mid-January, and in that meeting, something comes up that we discussed. Can we say, oh, okay, we're going to move that into committee of the whole in February? Then you can go out and project that up to the community. It doesn't have to necessarily be within those four days before the meeting. It could be done two weeks before.
Yeah, I'm a call. So I'll, I'll pick up and absolutely keep the whole, and it was framed to raise counsel. I think that's a really, um, you can point back and meet the length and, uh, the points here. Everybody's making anything with credit. One of the other things that potentially we would use that for, and I want staff to think about as well, is sometimes you're going down a road, or we're going down a rabbit hole in the project. And now we need some council direction, but we're going to a resolution. Right? We just need confirmation. Which path should we go down on this, so that when we can then bring it back to you, we haven't, we haven't taken the direction we wanted to expect, right? So we're checking almost sometimes. Not that we're gonna see that as much, but I'd like to see it in the past. And then finally, the thing I was gonna say, well, guess what, guys? The time is yours. You get to di- direct when we schedule these and when time we start them. So if, for instance, we determine that we want to have these committees of the whole, but we do not necessarily want them to start at five thirty, we can choose a different thing, not that many of us wants to do that. Or we can choose by bylaw. Council meetings start times, instead of committee of the whole at six. And so if, if council, but those are all available to you as options to do this. You guys control when these meetings occur. So if you find that you like them, but you don't like the time, bring that back and we will, we will work with you on directing times for start times.
Paraphrase then. Paraphrase. You may turn loosely. Paraphrase. If the committee of the whole conversation clarifies questions, guessing so, so that in the future, when a motion comes to council, there is potentially less discussion, because it's already been had. Bear with me. I like to turn less discussion. And we are to hold the committee of the whole, so that the regular council meeting then would be shorter and less confusion. So the regular council meeting would be shorter. If we started the regular council meeting at six thirty and had the committee of the whole meeting at six, the net change in your evening time commitment, would it stay about the same? No guarantees.
As you know, it's on the beginning.
Free flow of the committee of the whole, right?
Yeah, right, and, and you have the half hour, that's your free flow, and then at six thirty, you say we have five minutes before we, and you can, you can convene a meeting late, you just can't convene it early. So potentially, say, our counselors who have other time commitments from a practical standpoint, this doesn't have any impact in their time that has an impact on the positive efficiency of your time spent. What do you think, ladies and gentlemen? Is that an idea to consider? Go ahead.
Does the council meeting have to be at the same time every two weeks? Or can we say if there is committee of the whole, it's at six in the morning?
Ideally for notification for the public, and I think it is nice to at least be consistent so that they are fully aware of which days and which times. Um, because as soon as you start rotating through, you have a little bit more tracking, and I'm working on getting. Well, I wouldn't, it's totally possible, you can, you're able to do what you like. However, I would, um, probably not recommend that just for public participation.
I was just thinking, you could also move the opposite way, right? If you have committee of the whole at six and then have public meetings, or our standard meeting at six thirty, they might get it in their heads that it's always six thirty and never show up for the committee at all.
My recommendation would be that you would be changing your council start time in that part. So like, and it's in your bylaw that you're starting at six, and your first and second and fourth Mondays. Yeah, if, if you were to do that, all I'm saying is, my point was, and, and not trying to resolve it, this is. Because that, you have not, you get to control that. So if you choose to develop this path, but you don't like the time, you can control. As much as we're all used to the second, fourth Monday at six P M, and that's just the way it is.
Does anybody want to have further discussion of this, the next committee of the whole meeting? Or is there, is there direction coming out of this?
Sorry, I was just gonna mention that the council procedure bylaw does require that the calendar be adopted by December eighth. Uh, which is why I was bringing this forward for discussion, so that, um, should the committee, uh, want to schedule a standing committee, I can have it all ready. Um, should they not want to, um, make a recommendation today, uh, I would be presenting the, um, twenty twenty-six calendar at the next meeting for council meetings only. Sort of as it stands, unless you provide me with a different, uh, recommendation.
But we, but if we did this committee of the whole at five thirty, we can cancel them if there's no need.
Correct.
Connor, go ahead.
We need to make it, we then need to be able, do we have to make it a standing, then, like, by changing actual procedures? Or can we try this out, basically, that works by whatever time, five thirty, six, before we actually go into changing our whole agenda time? Or just the committee of the whole, like, I'm leaving agenda six P M, uh, at mine site, but just more of trying is, we don't have to say to the public guaranteed Monday versus Monday. This is more, we know about it and we started up and you do your advertising sets, you will, instead of it having to be an actual standing. Like a factual change.
Yeah, I understand what you mean. I'm just trying to, um, the intent of this is to provide the public with, uh, like a notification of a standing meeting, which would be, I mean, we could do it on a three-month trial period, maybe scheduled for the first three months at five thirty, and then see how that goes, and we can revisit it in March and see how it's going. We can either continue on for the rest of the year, and if it's not working, we could just go back to the ad hoc or, you know, anything else that council might decide at that time. But at the December eighth meeting, the, for the council procedure bylaw, I, we would need to adopt a twenty twenty-six calendar for council meetings only.
Only, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, if we just, instead of having this as like a, a changeover, as we try it first and then maybe five months to send her. Decision and has to be on that, then go from there.
Yeah, I can definitely recommend, recommend a pretty much trial period.
And, and this is mostly be some people that do have work. You know, you guys are miserable, but you need to change either.
I was gonna say, why don't we try for six months, because usually by the time we get past June, we finish tax season and, and the summer shows up and everything kind of goes dead anyway, so if by then we see if we liked it or didn't like it, and. And yeah, I guess maybe we only got a few months, and then it's somebody else's decision, but I don't know, it was just, I, I'd like to try it, but if everybody else finds a time problem.
I think try.
I like the idea, which is, I was concerned, because I know you drive in and you're chasing, I mean, that's sort of listening. I like the idea.
It's nice and organized, like, that is beautiful. Our organization is amazing. Um, instead of brooding community, and then, I guess, well, you don't like this and failed us. Yeah, so why put it out there yet?
Very important issue, Council, then, that, uh, while we, you do have the option of the December eighth meeting to, to change this direction, but we will bring to council on the eighth, uh, twenty twenty-six calendar, which will show the first six months of the year, having a standing committee of the whole at five thirty, um, or the first of every month. And the reason why I'm saying that right now is because it's six o'clock.
No, good enough. Good enough. That'll be discussed in a regular council meeting, I think, on the very, with that, this meeting is now adjourned. There, here we have a regular.
Ten minutes.
Finish the recording strictly.